Evening, folks. It's 6:30. We'll call this meeting the order of Board of Selectmen for July 10, 2023. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, before we get started, we have a statement that I would like to make, and then we're going to move right along into our regular agenda here. So, as many of you know, the town received workplace complaints from employees of the fire department in March this year about the fire chief and another fire employee. Through its attorney, the town hired an investigator performing an impartial review of the situation. The board received the report and findings on June 19th and took action based upon it shortly thereafter. Unless and until the new Nottingham Fire and Rescue Department members send a new individual to the Board of Selectmen for its approval and appointment as the new fire chief, Deputy Chief Matt Curry will serve as the interim fire chief. If you would like additional information, you may submit a right-to-know request to the town, but this board is not able to comment further on any personal matters. Okay, we'll move right into manifests.
I'm making a motion to approve the manifest of accounts payable 626, 710, and payroll of 627 and 711.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by Matt Sherlin. All in order?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Sherlin.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the 619, 2023 minutes with a few corrections. And those corrections would be on line item number four, saying Tim DiAbro joined the meeting at 8:09. He was here to begin another meeting, so we'll change that note on line 173, that Mr. DiAbrio made the motion. It was actually myself. Steve Welch made the motion, so we'll make that amendment. And then on, starting on 198 through 200, where we reflect the change, the state that stated that about four weeks ago, she heard a rumor that one of the board members discussing the issue with his spouse, and that information had gone to other members of the public, and this kind of information is now being posted on Facebook. She noted that the board should not be discussing such issues with the family. I'll make sure those minutes are corrected. And I think that was all for the edits on the minutes of 619.
Has everybody had a chance to review 21 and 26?
Yep.
I have reviewed.
Matt?
Yep. I've reviewed. I didn't see. Okay. All of us could get at the draft.
Okay.
Date.
We want to approve all three minutes of 619, 621, and 626 are the noted amendments.
I believe there were amendments on... No, I'm sorry. I have additional amendments on 621. I'm sorry, 619.
Okay.
Line 2... 16. I'm just trying to check. Line 219, the public session was entered at 8:42. It should actually be 8:55. That was when the non-public was exited. And then on June 26th, non-public session was entered at 9:17 PM on line 118, and then also on 122. Those times need to be adjusted.
Perfect. So we'll make those adjustments, amendments to those minutes.
She made a motion to...
So we've made a motion to accept them as amended. Do we have a second?
I'll second the approval for the public minute 619, 621, 626 as amended.
A motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by Matt Sherlin. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Sherlin.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Unanimous. Non-public meetings for 619, 21, and 26.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of 619, non-public minutes of nine are 219, June 21st, and June 26th.
I'll second the motion to approve the non-public minutes for 619, 621, and 626.
Motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by Matt Sherlin. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Sherlin.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett. Unanimous.
Reports from assigned boards. Budget hasn't met. Planning?
We have planned a meeting coming this Wednesday on a possible conceptual review for a 25-lot subdivision going off Route 156 on the Rim and Nottingham line, proposed by Mr. Fauzone. That should be the things. Last meeting we actually held, too, was about the subdivision off Smoke Street, where we had conditions which they were going to meet, so they need to come back and finish that meeting, so... But just subdivisions.
CIP hasn't met. Marston?
Tim's not here.
Did anybody... No? Okay. So, we'll get that next time. Town Administrator report.
All right. The first thing that you'll see on my report is Stratford Regional Planning Commission is seeking representatives for the town of Nottingham to serve on their technical advisory committee. This is for transportation and transit providers and agencies in the state and region to get together and formulate some ideas. So they're looking for an appointee and a vacant, obviously because we are now paying members to Stratford Regional Planning Commission. We now have voting authority, and we're open to these spots, so if you have any recommendations or if anybody would like to step forward and consider these positions, if it's out there.
They could be from the general public of the town as well, right?
Correct.
If anybody's interested within the crowd here or even at home, just email or call the Board of Selectmen's office there and, you know...
And they typically meet when?
I don't have that information, but I can get it. I want to say it's...
Says right here, I think the third paragraph down, right? Two years, 9:00 AM on the first Friday of every month.
So you'd have to be available mornings on a Friday?
One Friday.
Right. One Friday a month.
Any more discussion on that?
I've provided you with a proposal from Alarm Systems Plus. They're the ones that handle our camera monitoring and our key fob locking system throughout the town hall here. They also handle the camera system that's over at the recycling center. This would be to rekey the fire station. It hasn't been done for several years. I actually don't think it's been done since the building was erected, so the proposal is quite hefty. It's $9,900. It's for all doors, and it would give a computerized electronic key code system where whoever is assigned to be able to manage that can add users and delete them as necessary. And it would also give a tracking system as to who's entering and exiting the building and at what times. So this quota's for $9,900. I did not obtain other quotes, just because this is a vendor that we're currently using for our alarms. If you would like me to seek additional proposals to make sure it's in line, I can certainly do that.
How are we suggesting we pay for this?
I am suggesting that it be withdrawn from the building expendable trust fund. We just added $90,000 into it this year. I do believe there's enough money to be able to fund this purchase because the underdrain repair came in a little bit less than we were expecting. They didn't have... It didn't have to be as invasive as they were expecting, started at the utility room rather than the women's room, so...
Okay. How's the board feel? Go with the estimate or put it out to see who...
I mean, the system that's here works pretty well. It's already known through town members, so, you know, please. So would it be the same access for any of the access to this building as well? Would it be...
It has to be a completely separate system, just because of location.
Okay.
There is... You can't go through a Wi-Fi signal.
Right. Okay.
And there's something to be said using the same vendor as well, so...
Right. And we're happy with the camera quality?
Yes. Yeah, we actually... One of the things that I was going to report for the Recreation Department is they just added cameras. There's now two, monitoring the playground and the ball field, and now in the kitchen and the community room as well. Quality's great.
Right. So that being said, I'm happy with the quote that we got.
Do we need a motion or just approval?
I would like a motion because technically this goes against our purchasing policy. Anything over $5,000, I should be getting three quotes, but you do have the ability to waive that if you already have a vendor in place, so...
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the Alarm System Plus proposal for rekeying the Nottingham Fire and Rescue Department building for the quote of $9,900.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Matt Sherlin, seconded by Steve Welch. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Sherlin.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
All right. I've reviewed the job opening for the Public Works Director position. We've had a handful, I will say probably five candidates, that have applied, none of which have any roads experience, which is concerning for that position. So I recommend a change to the position we're seeking, removing the oversight of the recycling center and specifically focusing on the Highway Department, so it would be tagged a Highway Department Director. I've changed the listing for this and also removed any of the recycling center requirements from the job description that was in place, and I'm proposing that to you tonight in draft form. It just needs to be finalized if you're okay with proceeding forward that route.
So you're effectively... We're effectively separating the recycling center from the Highway...
That is correct.
So it'll be its own standalone department going forward?
Correct.
Okay.
And that... This one?
That is correct.
So you want us to request a motion to approve the updated job description?
Yes, please.
I did review it, and I would suggest that we make the recommendation that we approve that. Can I ask one thing?
We have in the example of essential duties that the person's on-call 24 hours a day, 365 days a year.
That was carried forward from the prior description. If you would like to change that, you're welcome to.
Well...
I guess it depends on how conditions are. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be winter weather. It could be a tree down, any type of storm-related damage.
Well, you hope the person that takes the job knows that the situation at hand is a...
Reasonable.
Well, there's something to be said for someone in the town applying for it and getting it. I mean...
I just... It'd probably be... It's like the one-hit person, right? If the police discover an issue and they need to get a front-end loader out there, they just call this one person, and then they can decide who they have available, who's around.
Yep.
Technically, it would go to the on-call, but if they need assistance and they have to bring the director in, then the assumption would be that they would be available to respond if necessary.
No different than police or fire.
I'll say it.
I'll say it. I made a motion. If you want to... Somebody wants to second it, we can move forward, and if not...
I'll second the motion.
We'll table it.
Okay. Motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by John Moran. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Sherlin.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Moving on, I don't have any other action items, just informational. Herbicide treatment started in Pawtucket Lake today, and it's an effort to control the growth of the invasive aquatic species Melfoil. Notice has been posted to the town's website since one of the treatment areas is right in front of the town beach. There are temporary water use restrictions resulting from the treatment, but fortunately, it was a rainy day, and it's six hours no swimming. There are additional restrictions for people that live near the treatment areas, and they should have received a certified notification directly from Solitude Management.
Are they supposed to be doing additional treatments, or was this...
This is one.
This is a one-time herbicide treatment. They've already done some of the hand-pulling.
And this is at no cost to Nottingham?
Well, this is all part of the grant that we get.
Yeah, okay.
For the Fire Rescue Department, Primex approved the claim for the unreported damage to the bumper on Engine 2. Checks for both claims have been received, and we're waiting scheduling for the repair. I'm anticipating a quote to install a camera system at the fire station using the same company that we did for the lock system. For the Police Department, part-time Officer Samantha Lemay was sworn in last Thursday by Selectman Bartlett. She began her training that evening. Here at the town office, the cameras have been installed in the additional public areas, including the kitchen, the playground, the ball field, and the community center. I will be scheduling a budget status review at the next meeting, July 17th. We're more than halfway through the year now, so we're getting close to budget season, so I just want to make sure everybody's on track with where we're at. Recreation summer camps in full swing. Week three is now in progress. This is Parks and Recreation Month, as you proclaimed last year, so I was just putting that out there. We do have some information from Courtney regarding the playground equipment repair. There's a tunnel that cracked right at the base. She's reached out to the manufacturer, and because of the age of the equipment, it can't be replaced. It would have to be fabricated and steel, so it was an excessive quote you'll find in your packet. And so, with that being said, she looked at replacing the structure altogether. I think it was about $6,000 just to put a brand-new structure... $6,000 more to put a brand-new structure in place. So I'm going to leave that for you to consider, and I'll put it on for next week.
Is that something that she can use the Rec. Revolving Fund to replace?
She does have some funding available for it, but it's going to deplete the playground fund, so it's something that we're going to have to think about moving forward into the next budget cycle.
Okay.
Is it necessary to replace it?
Well, the... It's blocked off right now. I mean, if we take that out... You can take out that piece of equipment, but it's the main structure on our playground, so it's going to be a loss.
There's generally a lot of people, if they're here for karate, if they're here for doing stuff, a lot of kids are over here. If you're down there, you know, with sports, I mean, it's probably the most-used structure in town.
Just asking for clarification.
And for that structure, the quotes that she's provided are between $14,000 and $18,000. That's for the structure alone. Then we need manpower to install it. It's been done in the past by volunteers, and hopefully we can wrangle up enough to do that again, but...
Yeah, because one of the quotes said that it was $1,500 for them to put it in?
Correct. So I will leave that for you to digest over the next week, and hopefully we can bring it back up for discussion next week. Moving on?
Yep.
Okay. Highway Department. Steve Parkinson from MRI's come on board as the interim Public Works Director. He's here two days a week until he can fill the Highway Director position. Foreman Matt Pickin has taken a position elsewhere, and his last day was last Thursday. Two new members have been hired for the department, Scott Laduke and Dan Dion. Roadside mowing and ditch work has been completed alongside Deerfield Road in preparation for the paving to commence, tentatively later in the month. I'm still waiting on a contract from R&amp;D, so that's obviously pending the nice weather we've been getting. The two trucks that have been out of service are finally in for overdue repairs. Coastal's beginning their repair next week, and McFarland on the Ford is this week. McFarland, I don't expect to see that truck back until probably late August, because I think it's just shy of an engine repair.
As long as we get it back before winter.
Yeah. Recycling Center, the credit card terminal has been installed. We're now accepting credit cards over there. We might need a Wi-Fi boost.
Are they still accepting cash?
They are accepting cash. What I had done was I put out a notice that as of July 13th, we are going to stop accepting cash at the facility. That's unless you tell me otherwise.
Just out of curiosity, why would we stop it?
Just for a control measure. If it's not there, it's not a temptation for theft. It is an audit control, but from this... You also have to look at it from the standpoint of it as a legal tender, so I don't know that we can necessarily not accept it.
Probably has to still be in place. We can encourage people to use the credit card.
I don't feel comfortable cutting it out altogether.
Okay.
And the other thing, though, is either... If you were going to get rid of cash, I feel like we would... Should eat the fee, like to also say, "You can't use cash," because everybody has like a debit card, but then it'd be like...
Right. So that's the other part of it.
You're also going to get a fee that's like insult to injury.
There is the 2.99% processing fee, which on an average transaction, you're talking, you know, $1.52, $2 somewhere around there, but that is the question is...
Add those up quick.
Yeah.
We might have to... As we're looking at the tipping fees, we might have to consider that if there is going to be credit cards and we are going to eat the fee, then we need to make sure that we're definitely covering the costs. Like if a mattress costs us $20 and that's all we're charging, and now we're only getting $8 on it, $18 on it, then...
Right.
Well, no. Wouldn't you charge the $18 plus whatever the fee is? I mean, $20 plus the fee?
Right.
But I'm just saying.
But still, you're still getting $20. It's just...
Just increase the fee.
Did I misunderstand what you were saying?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
It was still... We would charge them 20, but if we ate the fee...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
You'd take the money out, so we would actually, at the end, only receive the...
Okay.
Right.
I still say we should continue with the cash.
Continue with the cash? I can certainly update the notice.
The rest of the board agrees with that?
I agree with maintaining cash. If we don't want to do checks, I feel like cards are fine, but...
Well, we haven't made it totally official yet, so it was just a warning that was out there for next... For this Wednesday, so we can just update it.
Okay. I just saw that it'd come up on the town. Did something happen? Because we didn't talk about that at our recycling center workshop? And then all of a sudden, it was... So I didn't know if something had happened that we were making a change. Good.
And that is all I have, other than a request for a non-public session at the end.
Actually, I have a review from last meeting. Any discussion?
I know at some point, we need to talk about the oil tank out of the building, but personally, I haven't had time to review some options that we have here, so...
We also need to talk about the two buildings, the two conference rooms.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that. Yeah.
So I suggest we kind of table that for another...
And the conference room? The... I believe they were going to use the revolving fund for that, for their part of the construction. However, we don't have it on our end. Right?
I can see what's left to pull from the building maintenance fund, but if anything else comes up that is significant in repair, if we have a heating system failure or water... Hot water heater, anything that happened last year, if we have any type of expense like that, we should have that to fall back on.
Okay.
Not saying that we have deferred maintenance or anything.
No. No, we don't want to do that.
Oh, my God.
No.
I mean, I'd like to see the funds go to maintenance, because there's plenty of it.
But... Yep. So we're going to table the playground structure until next week to discuss?
Yep. I think there needs to be more discussion in regards to the construction for the Rec. Department before we finalize everything.
The room, the conference room spot?
Yeah. Yeah. You know, there's no point in having to move us forward if we can't do that other one at the same time.
Correct.
It's not that we don't want to, you know... We're not approving it. It's already, you know, been approved, but at the same time, you know, we... This is one of the larger rooms, you know? We're not going to take the gym because they've got stuff in there, and that second room over there is kind of tiny, so...
The gym also makes money.
Gym also makes money, yeah. So I think it's worthy of more discussion when we figure out where we're at, so...
The budget meeting.
Yeah. All right. Any more discussion?
So there's another thing I'd like to bring up. Celebrate Nottingham. We wanted to form a committee to maybe do some celebratory events, just like we did on July 4th. We had a donation jar out there. We collected some money, and I'd like to be able to put that money into a fund so that come next Fourth of July, we have a...
Do you still have funds left over from the 300?
Yes, we do have funds left over.
Would you combine that?
No.
No?
I don't think we can at this point.
You would have to...
That would take a vote of the town.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, that's something we put it up for.
But if we form this Celebrate Nottingham Committee, we could have a separate fund in there that would... I mean, there isn't a lot of money there, but I think we had $150, which I personally don't want to hang on to, but unless we have some sort of place to put it, hence why I thought we should have a charge to officially recognize Celebrate Nottingham.
Yeah, I think people still like the wintertime bonfire that happened last time, Fourth of July fireworks seemed to be a...
Right. And if we have a committee that could investigate that, come before us.
Steve?
I'm kind of unofficially on the committee. Maybe Steve Sorev can let us know who else had volunteered. I know there's a core of us that...
A number of people have stepped forward, and it's a really great idea. Steve Welch, Joe Welch, Catherine Furlong, and Doug Cummins. The idea is some of the things that we've captured in the 300, we would like to continue on.
Fair enough.
Right. We got the 250th Celebration of Bunker Hill, which those reenactors talked like they might want to come back and...
They love that field.
And, you know, I heard people say that they've traveled across the country, and they have yet to see a location any better than what we had up there. They thought it was a premier site, and they would like to come back, so... Just another little thing that will probably come up in the near future.
Well, how do we keep this ball rolling?
We just need to say it's all right to form the committee.
Well...
But it takes the vote of our select board to do that.
I'm not opposed to it. How can we be opposed to it? It's not a bad thing.
Right. I just don't know how we do it.
Just make a motion, we form the committee, and we move on.
Right.
Yep. So I'll make a motion to form a committee, Celebrate Nottingham.
Is that the committee's name?
I think that's what we decided on. Was it Nottingham?
Okay.
I'll second it.
A motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by John Moran. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Sherlin.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Assessing. We have some solar exemptions and an intent to cut here.
Make a motion to accept the intent to cuts. MAP 18, Lot 18, MAP 48, Lot 2/1, and 2/2.
I'll second.
Second it? I need to... Okay. Motion made by Steve Welch, seconded by John Moran. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Sherlin.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Bartlett.
Exemptions?
Yep. So I'll make the motion to approve the solar exemptions for MAP 4, Lot 11, MAP 10, Lot
Yep, um, so I'll make the, uh, motion to approve the solar exemptions for map four, lot eleven, map ten, lot nine dash forty-one, map nineteen, lot five dash one, map twenty-four, lot one four one dash two B, map forty-one, lot twelve dash two, map forty-four, lot two dash ten, and map forty-nine, lot four.
Second it.
Motion made by Matt Sherlin, seconded by Steve Welch, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Sherlin.
Aye, John Morin.
Aye, Ben Bartlett. Unanimous? Okay, uh.
You have one more item to address in there that's not listed on the agenda, it's the civil forfeiture warrant for the dog licensing.
Okay.
Uh, Lori reported that she was able to get sixty of the names that were originally provided to on her report removed, but there are still a list of outstanding.
These are the ones that are left over?
That's correct.
And what are we suggesting we're gonna do? Letters didn't help, is that it?
Correct. Well, the letters did help.
But I'm not on these.
You're not on those?
There are still some people on that list.
Right, right, that's what I'm getting at. What does the board think?
So it will be a twenty-five dollar fine, twenty-five dollar fine, I'm just pulling up Lori's email real quick, because I don't think that got printed for you.
Can I see that?
Sure.
If she wants a warrant, uh, charge for the certifying it.
Yes. So she's looking in the certified mail option, it's now eight dollars and change to send out a certified mailing, we get seven dollars of that back. It's not coming up as quickly as I'd like it to, I love our internet. She'd like to send out the letters ASAP via certified mail, return receipt requested, the new USPS fees will be eight forty-three per envelope as rates have just increased. We're allowed to collect seven dollars per dog in addition to a twenty-five dollar penalty.
Personal feelings?
So that's what that warrant is, is for her to send out the letters.
I think we oughta cover our costs for sending out the letters, I don't know that we need to make money on it at this point, but.
Right, I just haven't seen, it didn't come through. Change the review.
We could table it until the next meeting.
I think she wants to get them out, the date she has on it is today.
If you're gonna move forward with it, today is the deadline for signing the warrant.
Do we, did you have a, an exact number of individuals or dogs we're talking about here? This is just a very heavy list. Records printed seventy-one.
Do we set the fine at the twenty-five bucks, or is that set by the state, or is that, where does that recommendation come in to me?
I think it's by statute.
And then, did we used to do this, but this is now?
No, we have not done it in the past.
Alright, and she came to us, we have to do this, it's a state, per the RSA, uh, four six six, colon fourteen. Four six six, colon one is the RSA, okay.
I don't like the idea of charging the twenty-five, kinda agree with you on that one, but.
I think it's state set, right? Is there something that's kinda slipped through the cracks, and then she realized we weren't doing it, and that.
Is it state set that we charge twenty-five, or we can probably set any fee we want? Just thinking. I could be wrong, I've been wrong many times.
I believe it's state action. It is state statute, I'm just pulling it up.
RSA four six six.
Alright, you wanna come back to this after we have our, uh.
Sure.
Appointments?
Sure.
Okay. Alright, we'll come back to that, um, we'll make up the time on the other end, Mr. Vilchok, I understand you, you have an appointment at seven o'clock, come on up. Mr. Vilchok, when you, when you come up, please state your full name and address.
Jay Vilchok, son of Chief Vilchok and Lieutenant Vilchok.
Address, sir?
Fifty-three Ministerial Branch.
What town?
Bedford.
Thank you, sir.
How's everybody doing?
Doing alright.
Steve, I know you, nice to meet you, Mr. Sherlin, nice to meet you, Mr. Morin, nice to meet you, Mr. Bartlett, nice to meet you, Mrs. White. So I'm here tonight to speak, um, I'm gonna share some words of support that were shared, uh, in regard to my parents, um, who've been silenced by the town since March, and pretty much ran out of town, so I'm just gonna jump right into it. I, I stand with the Nottingham Fire Chief Jay Vilchok and Lieutenant Sandy Vilchok. As someone who grew up in Nottingham, I saw their involvement in the community from a very young age. I personally witnessed them sacrificing so much of themselves for the sake of others. Emergency calls, Santa coming through for Christmas, car seat installs, fire permits, the list could go on and on. As I became an adult, I had the pleasure of working at Exeter Emergency Department for nearly seven years. And during that time, I witnessed their continued selflessness, taking care of patients during transfer for emergency, sometimes life-saving care. The Vilchoks and other in the Nottingham community, uh, this happens any day of the week, at any time of the day. These folks are there for all of us. It's a disgrace to hear how the Nottingham Board is handling the situation, not only for the sake of the Vilchoks, but for the sake of the health and safety of the members of Nottingham community. It is day thirty-eight, no complaint produced. If there was an issue of merit, something should surely have been shared. Please join me in publicly sharing support for the Vilchoks. Please also join me in publicly sharing disgust in how careless the Board has handled this, and at the cost of the health and safety of the Nottingham community. Katie Tennis. Lieutenant Sandra J. Vilchok and Chief Jay Vilchok have done more for this community, they are this community. The unseen hours, commitment, and dedication is second to none. I'm lucky to have both of them as dear friends to myself and my family, as I know they are, as I know they are to so many in Nottingham. I know there was not one night in the past thirty years that the Vilchoks were not monitoring emergencies in this town. Whether they took their, whether they took their out-of-town trips with their phones always immediately answered for questions, or they had their gear packed in their own vehicles ready to go, the town was always covered. They are more than good people, exemplary. Cassie Chamberlain, Lieutenant, first ever female lieutenant, Portsmouth Fire Department, former Nottingham Fire Department member. I think only my Uncle Johnny has been on the department longer than your folks, they don't deserve to be treated this way. After a lifetime of service to this town, why would they name someone else to be interim chief is ridiculous. This is the exact reason why we have a deputy, and a very capable one at that. Your parents deserve better than the citizens, better than that, and the citizens of Nottingham deserve much better from our Board of Selectmen. John Fernal III, citizen of Nottingham. Your mother was there for me in twenty fifteen when I shattered my leg, and then again in twenty twenty-two, when my son needed to be rushed to the hospital, both times in the middle of the night, glidin' times, Nottingham, New Hampshire. My son was the first baby to be delivered in this town, I, I don't know if that's, that's kind of, that's not accurate, but that was the statement. Sandy Vilchok, delivered him at two, two fifty-five AM. We love you, Sandy. It's time to protest and demand all answers. Jeannie Smith, citizen of Nottingham, patient of Lieutenant Vilchok. I believe your mom was there for me late night in January when I fell and broke my ankle. Also, I was in a wheelchair part-time, she was so thoughtful and caring about my needs, she made sure I was comfortable before they moved me out of my house. Jennifer Sagan. They were there for my family more than once, Kevin Patton. Jay was honestly one of the nicest people I've ever met living in Nottingham, sickening what the towns leaders are putting them through, Joe Arshenball. So sorry this is happening to your family, I thought by law the accused have a right to face the accusers. We'll see. Seems to me they are trying to dig up false accusations. The townspeople have the right to be heard and vote on whatever they are accusing your parents of. Your parents have been so town-oriented for as long as I can remember, and I don't, and they don't deserve this kind of treatment. Betty Hurley Olsen. She has been service, referring to Lieutenant Vilchok, in service to this town since I moved here and is respected and admired by all. Time for answers. Jennifer Michael Gonzalez-Mannard. Sandy is the best, Janice Tillman-Lyle. I would also like to know the answers. We have a public works director who has had many complaints against them, and they ignore the voters and residents' concerns and give the public works director a big raise in contract, and then they do this to long-term employees from the town with well-known reputation, Kathleen Sinfo. My guess is that the person who put in the complaint is after the job, or has a personal vendetta. What I would like to know is why the town is acting on this but did nothing about all the complaints they received from town employees about our public works director. I guess they pick and choose when they wanna enforce the rules and laws, Emerald Reed. I met her in nineteen eighty-nine when we coached T-ball together, when a tone would go out and half the adults would take off and respond to an emergency call, your dad included. Nancy Smart. I worked with Sandy at Nottingham Elementary, she was always caring, upstanding, and professional, and someone I always respected, even more so when she became the fire lieutenant. It's not right to see someone as Sandy and Jay, who have given their all to this community, to keep this community safe, to be disrespected and treated so badly. This is a very sad state of affairs. Joanne Inman-Vallaire. Jay and Sandy risked their lives every day for people, for the people of Nottingham, and this is the way they are thanked? Let's get this out in the open and stop ruining their lives, Peter Lyle. I support Chief and Lieutenant, this is absolutely terrible. As a citizen of this town, I want to know why this action was taken. Perhaps it's time for a petition, I'd also like to know who had the authority to take actions without due process. Solandria Patrizi. Unbelievable, never heard of anything like this, Magdulyn Locke. What happened to the Fifth Amendment of the US Constitution, right of the accused, Mark Carter? If the complaint is serious enough to warrant third-party high-cost investigation, then the complainer should commit in writing the detail of the concerns. The BOSS stands and pledges the, to the US flag for liberty and justice for all, pledge broken, Gene Reed. And furthermore, why is this investigation even taking place when there was no investigation at all concerning the DPW boss? When most employees wrote letters of complaint and thirty-seven residents signed a formal complaint against them? None of that was even acknowledged by the administrator or the BOSS, even to say they received the complaints or continuous emails. I was even told that they had zero complaints about the recycling center when I spoke to the fill-in administrator while the pass one was out. The BOSS, except Ben Bartlett, refused to even speak to the disgruntled employees. The investigative problems, to investigate the problems. Well-known that the former administrator believed that if you ignore people, they will just go away. You don't know me, but I know your dad. I was a longtime dispatcher at Rock, and got to know your dad pretty well. He was a big help when I was looking for a job. Please tell him and your mom I'm thinking of them and sending my thoughts and support from Oregon. Wonderful people who are clearly mistreated, Rich Newman. I can't imagine what complaints anyone would have against your mom's character. In all my interactions with her, parentheses, and there have been many, she is kind, caring, supportive, and professional. She's been to many tense calls to my parents' house, and she's always shown compassion and concern, not only for them, but for our families, neighbors, and others who've been impacted. Anytime I run into her, often at blood drives. You guys banned her from a blood drive. She always asks my parents and always gives me prac, she always asks about my parents and always gives me practical advice as well as emotional, emotional support. I admire her character, Amy Douglas Papino. He's a man of integrity, compassion, and great mentor, referring to my father. Both my kids work with Jay and Sandy through the school, Boy Scouts, and State Park, Jennifer Michael Gonzalez-Mannard. I have served with scouting in the town of Nottingham for over twenty years, having this be a total volunteer part of my time. Dan and I have spent a great deal of time providing the best possible experience for the youth in this town. I have met many amazing young men and families, and have spent a great deal of time with, and consider them to be like family. Most are totally unaware of the hours Dan and I have spent with the Chief and Lieutenant to make our program the safest for our youth. Chief is the charter rep for our pack and troop. The Nottingham Fire and Rescue are the charter of both troop and pack. The countless hours of training, discussions, of making the right choices, and last-minute paperwork approvals he has had to do for us. The Chief has been my boss for so many years, it's hard to believe it has been this long. Not once have I experienced anything unprofessional by either the Chief or Lieutenant. Respect, honesty, they have always given Dan and I with changes that we were asked to make, have always been highly professional. Both have always helped with countless hours slash years of training our scouts to earn merit badges. No one can ever underestimate the time Dan and I have put into this with Chief and Lieutenant, to have a program that gives our youth a safe, educational, fun experience. They have provided us with the place to have our meetings, and we're always there to help with anything we needed. In October two thousand eight, when my family lost everything in that house fire, we were camping, and our scout families knew where we were, and reached out to us to give us the news. Chief and Lieutenant and several others waited for us to get home. They were there for us, professional even at a time of loss. I have loved this town and have seen many changes, some not so good. Now my search for a new charter and charter rep begins. I have several youth that only have a couple of years left to earn their Eagle Scout. We just lost the best support our pack and troop will ever have, huge loss, Kathy Ann DeButz. I've known Sandy Vilchok for forty-five years, and Jay longer than that. In that time, I have seen them put community before their personal wants and needs. Together, they have protected and helped the residents of Nottingham, at times risking their own lives to do so. Jay has managed to make Nottingham Fire Department more efficient managing the budget while making sure the town has the best equipment possible. They put in countless hours educating the community on fire safety. Sandy taught CPR so others would know what to do in an emergency. She also organized blood drives in the community, volunteering her time and talent. Jay mentoring so many young men and women that also went on to help their own communities. For these two individuals or any human being to be treated in this manner is ridiculous and unprofessional. Common courtesy would demand a conversation about the so-called complaint, asking for their side of the story rather than jumping to the conclusion they were immediately in the wrong. Joy Zukauskas. The Chief and Lieutenant have been to my house on multiple calls in the past, and made my daughter feel safe and protected. Through Girl Scouts, I have had many interactions with them both, and they were both extremely helpful. Grace Castangue. I have known the Chief and Lieutenant for twenty years, and their character and professionalism are above and beyond reproach, Mark Carter. I am concerned, I am a concerned citizen of Nottingham that feels our government is not being transparent, and I do not trust the BOSS, Sean Therian. I know the Chief and Sandy very, very well, having been the Fire Department Liaison as a member of the BOSS for four years. I assisted in establishing communications and environment that was fraught with nepotism. No, not the Chief and Sandy, external to them, for which the Chief was victim, and yet he ran the most professional organization you could imagine. The allegations are so far and beyond outside of their character that it just doesn't make any sense. Furthermore, the harsh language used by Upton and Hatfield in their letters is inflammatory and would put anyone on the defensive. One must ask, why didn't the TA and BOSS bring in the Chief for a discussion on the matter? Why didn't, why did they go directly to, you're guilty and we'll prove it? It's not the Chief and Sandy having diligently and with great priority worked to protect life in our town for decades, so perhaps earn the opportunity for an open dialogue. I guess this is the way in the new cancel culture, and about his paid leave posturing, while the Chief worked for this town as a full-time volunteer, and was paid a very small stipend at the end of every year, eleven thousand dollars, people. Eleven thousand dollars he made. Volunteer, full-time chief, it's ridiculous. Sandy worked on per damn, per call, and was a volunteer, so let's set that posturing aside, shall we? I'm absolutely disgusted with the way this was concluded. The victims here are the Chief and Sandy and the townspeople, and it's my hope that Chief and Sandy have their day in court. People in Nottingham, we should be supporting these two people, Mark. How about we explore the complainer's character? Let's have the names. Why do they deserve the respect and believability? And is there any fact to the backup of their allegations? Cindy Herrick. They have our full support, we know they are honorable self-sacrificing human beings, and don't have a bad bone between them, Peter Lyle. As a past EMT, thirty-seven R fourteen, they're both amazing people, Wayne G. Pureington. People of integrity expect to be believed, and when they're not, they let time prove them right, Mark Carter. As evidenced by the number of people supporting them, they have not been wronged by the town, they have been wronged by certain people elected or hired to work in the best interests of the town. These people have not done their job in the best interest of us, Gene Reed. To be told what they are accused of, to not be told what they're accused of in sixty-five days, and it went on longer than that, seems odd to me, after the years of service to Nottingham. Mary Meg Voorhees Crockett. I wanna say thank you to Sandy and Jay for responding multiple times to assist my big brother during his last months of life. My personal experience with their responses showed not only skill and professionalism, but kindness and compassion when dealing with patients and families. So again, thank you for being there for my family when we needed it most. Janice Voltz Kane. Hi, like many other residents, I suspect have kept their mouth shut on the subject for political reasons. I'm tired of it. Reinstate the Chief and reinstate the Lieutenant and be done with it, or resign yourselves, man up. This is obviously a revenge or personal vendetta against the Chief, Mark Carter. I stand by both Sandy and Jay. I've known the Vilchoks for almost thirty years and grew up right down the road from them. Their son Jay was like a brother to me, and their door was always open. I have fond memories of them, whether it was watching Sandy tending her plants, sitting around their table for spaghetti dinners, snowmobiling, learning about the land history of Pawtucket, teaching me CPR in babysitting class at the old town hall, spending time together in Nottingham Fire EMS explorers, one of the reasons I became a nurse, or just listening to their sound advice imparting wisdom to any group of youngsters willing to listen. They are good people, period. There is no excuse for how they are currently being treated. After all they have given this community, this is truly disheartening. Nikki Feather Stilson.
Mr. Vilchok, your time has expired.
Our red light is showing my time.
Thank you, Skip. Absolutely gut-wrenching to learn of what's happening to people that were so pivotal in my upbringing. Such a beautiful town, a place I will always consider home. Jay and Sandy were basically surrogate parents to me. They've always given their all and complete hearts to make sure Nottingham was and is a community. She is the best. Every time I see her at school for a fire drill or a fire inspection, I always try to convince her to come back. Kelly LaPointe Wheeler. I taught both of Sandy's children in Nottingham kindergarten. She volunteered in my classroom, and then went on to continue with volunteering and work in Title I math program. Sandy was great to work with, respected and liked by all. Leslie Emmets Fleming. The Board of Selectmen said the Vilchoks will not be, oh, this one doesn't matter, we'll skip this one. I would also like to know, and then we'll skip that one too, since I'm on time crunch here, because I could go on all night, but, you know. I hope things get sorted out at the Fire Department, because I called today looking for a certification. for a certified car seat installer and was told the only person qualified is on leave. Luckily, I was able to figure it out for myself, but it is something that many people need and consider important. Don't know what happened to our town. They get rid of the best and don't even have the guts to give them a reason. Beth Hurley Olson. Why, in response to the lieutenant being on leave? She has been in service in this town since I moved here and is respected and admired. Time for answers. Jennifer Michael Gonzalez-Mannard. So sorry this is happening to your family. I thought by law the accused have a right to face their accusers. Seems to me they are trying to dig up false accusations. The townspeople have the right to be heard and vote on whatever they're accusing your parents of. Your parents have been so town-oriented for as long as I can remember and don't deserve this kind of treatment. Beth Hurley Olson. Jay was honestly one of the nicest people I've ever met living in Nottingham, sickening what the townsleaders are putting them through. Joe Archibald. I'm sorry your parents are going through this. How incredibly shameful the town. I hope those behind this ridiculousness are held accountable. I wish them the best. Brandon Nygro. This makes me sick to my stomach. How could they treat them this way, after all their years of service to this town and community? Mike Jorgensen. Having worked with Chief Vilchak for close to ten years as a department chaplain, I have found him to be one of the most ethically-driven people I know. God bless you, Jay. Gary Anderson. I've known Jay Vilchak since kindergarten. During all these years, I've known his folks to be involved compassionate members of the Nottingham community. From what I've seen over the years, if the town officials are unable to articulate the misconduct was, it's likely because there wasn't anything adequate enough to justify the actions taken against the Vilchaks. Jenny Pena. My husband was out of town during the winter years ago, and I was home alone with the kids. Carbon monoxide detector went off. Called 911, and the fire department came right away, evacuated the house, put us in an ambulance in the middle of the night, cleared the house, we're all okay. Can't thank them enough. Stephanie Paquette Boucher. I'm a huge supporter of your mom, was a huge part of my life in Nottingham Elementary when I was young, since 2003. Abby Elizabeth Tilton. We'll move on from that, and we'll get down to the, the next subject. Nobody even bothered to speak with them. Wonderful. All right, so. How much time do I have?
Twelve minutes, Skip. You're taking all his time, twelve, uh, eleven more minutes?
Yeah, I'm taking all his time. He let me. Guide to conducting workplace investigations. Merrick C. Block. Merrick Block is the strategic advisor for winter investigations. Merrick has been an ethics and compliance officer for three multinational Fortune 500 companies and the healthcare system. He designed, implemented, and managed each company's workplace investigations process worldwide. He has trained thousands of HR and compliance professionals to conduct investigations. Merrick has personally conducted over eight hundred internal investigations of fraud and serious workplace misconduct in the United States, Europe, and Asia. This guide gives you information and practical advice on how to handle an investigation effectively. It is true that every workplace investigation will have unique issues, circumstances, dimensions, challenges, and outcomes, but an investigation can cause serious harm if not conducted properly. And I took excerpts from this, and we're gonna go down through it, and I'm gonna tie it into the, this, what you call, report, whatever this was. An investigation is not conducted simply to uncover sufficient facts to justify a result or to just, or to just record somewhere that the incident occurred. And here's my take on that. I believe there is ample evidence that the town hired an investigator to create cause for termination. This opinion is backed by the aggressive actions and treatment of the BOS and town attorney against my parents during the three-month-long investigation. The police banning them from the blood drive, not here to discuss what the issue is, and ending with a county sheriff. Investigations determine fully incredibly what happened with respect to a particular incident, whether suspected conduct did or did not take place, what the circumstances were, and who was involved. Whether a violation of law or company policy occurred, an investigation must be perceived as having been thorough, independent, and analytical. There is, again, there is ample evidence in the report that the investigation was not thorough or analytical. Lack of documents, lack of recorded responses from certain witnesses, lack of times, dates, places, selective use of town personnel, and fire department bylaws. Doubt is one of the primary attributes of any investigator. Investigators must be appropriately skeptical. They should not assume that management or employees are honest in telling the whole truth until the facts are gathered and the inquiries are complete. The essence of professionalism is that the investigator conducts the investigation with integrity, fairness, and diligence. How the investigation is conducted reflects professionalism. There is no explanation for who was interviewed versus who was not. Twenty-eight members on Nottingham Fire and Rescue Department. The investigation started with twelve members, plus two, the chief and lieutenant, then an additional one at the end. It is assumed that half of the twelve were the six complainants. Were the other six randomly chosen? Were they current or former members? Were they even on the fire department? Don't even know. Acting with professionalism, because it's not in the report. Acting with professionalism means treating everyone involved with respect. It also means you ask for help when you need it. It is not a failure of professionalism to admit that you need guidance or assistance to complete your investigation. Complaint two, four, five, and eleven all should have required expert analysis. I don't know if I have time to get into those right now, but... I don't. Leave it to someone else. Or I'll be here in two weeks. Investigators must be free from actual or apparent bias or conflict of interest. Consideration must be given to whether an investigator's judgment may be affected or criticized by previous biases or political considerations, whether real or not. Twitter. Fox News on the TV. Independence means that everyone gets a fair chance, and that all investigation subjects are each investigated in the same manner, with the same professional impartial... How much time do I have?
Eight minutes.
All right, I'm gonna skip down. Might come back to that. I wanna get to the good stuff. The final report offers no recommendations regarding how an employee should be disciplined, whether the company should compensate someone or similarly, similar post-investigation activity. Those steps are outside of the scope of the investigation. Quote, "Recommendations concerning personnel actions and discipline are beyond the scope of this report, and I make no recommendations in that regard." That's at the end of the report. Then the investigator promptly makes recommendations, which happen to be redacted, the entire thing. Lieutenant Vilchak waived her right to privacy, not Chief Vilchak, yet the report is full of redaction errors. Page one, Chief Vilchak appears, but the next name inferred to be Lieutenant Vilchak is redacted erroneously. It's troubling. Page three, Chief Vilchak appears, but Lieutenant Vilchak is redacted erroneously, as well as two others. My name appears as pertinent documents reviews in reference to my Facebook page, assuming the investigator was looking at the support lieutenant and... It's absurd. Using, citing my Facebook page I made to support my parents as a reviewed pertinent document. Joke. Lieutenant Vilchak, uh, page seven, chief appears, um, and then it's inferred that Lieutenant Vilchak is redacted erroneously. Page seven, Bedford is redacted, chief's son is redacted. Page ten, chief appears, inferred Lieutenant Vilchak is redacted erroneously. Page eleven, third, page eleven, Lieutenant Vilchak is redacted. I don't know why, because it's... Page twelve, Lieutenant Vilchak is erroneously redacted seven times. Page fourteen, Lieutenant Vilchak is erroneously redacted four times. Page fifteen, Lieutenant Vilchak is erroneously redacted at least three times. Page sixteen, Lieutenant Vilchak is erroneously redacted six times. On and on and on throughout the entire report. This continues for the entire report, and what's worse is on page eighteen, a firefighter's name is not redacted, revealing he is one of the six who complained. I'm not gonna sit here and... It's just absurd. Let's jump back into this. Please be sure that your witness is speaking from personal knowledge if they are relying on some info that they in turn learned from someone else. Please note that as well as the identity of that person... I find the fault, here's, here's a list of things I found in this report that were absurd. You have a witness key here, but it's, it, at some point during the report, the investigator decides she doesn't wanna use it anymore. I find the following descriptions accepted as credible witness accounts in the report to be very troubling. Some ex... Okay. Instead of naming witness one, two, three, four, we get really loose with our terminology here, and says, "Some express concern." That's complaint two, page eight. "They also expressed concern." Complaint two, complaint two, page eight. "Many stated," without listing witnesses. Complaint two, page eight. "Firefighters raised concern." Complaint one, page eight. "Several individuals." Complaint one, page seven. "Several individuals." Complaint three, page nine. "According to the interviewees." Complaint three, page nine. "They indicated." Complaint three, page nine. "Some mentioned." Complaint three, page nine. "Numerous members." Numerous members. Complaint three, page ten. "Many department members." Complaint four, page ten. Why have a witness key if you're not gonna name the witnesses? "Concerns were raised." What was the question? No questions. Complaint four, page ten. "Several individuals." Complaint four, page ten. "Almost every EMT." Complaint five, page twelve. "According to EMTs." Page twelve. "More than one on-call employee." Complaint five, page twelve. "There is almost universal agreement." Complaint five, page twelve. "Many of the eyewitnesses." Complaint five, page thirteen. "At least three EMTs." Complaint six, page thirteen. "Some report." Complaint six, page thirteen. "Several individuals." Complaint six, page fourteen. "EMTs stated." Complaint six and page fourteen. "Witnesses indicated." Complaint twelve, page nineteen. "Employees expressed concern." Complaint twelve, page nineteen. "Many provided examples where, where they or others." Complaint twelve, page nineteen. "One witness provided an example." Complaint twelve, page nineteen. "Some indicated." Complaint twelve, page nineteen. "Some have not experienced." Complaint twelve, page nineteen. "Other employees, including officers." Complaint twelve, page nineteen. "Several witnesses." Complaint twelve, page nineteen. "Heard of or were aware of." Complaint seven, page fourteen. No specifics. Interview should focus on those with firsthand knowledge of the situation. You should resist the temptation to interview as many people as possible. You must keep the scope of the investigation as limited as possible. There was no scope. Interviews appeared to be the six and then random individuals. Deck was stacked. Someone came up with a list to interview versus who not to interview. No explanation given. "Some reporters are simply more credible than others." Reporters being the ones who complained. "No reporter's allegations should be rejected out of hand." Absolutely. Although issues of bias and self-interest must also be considered. Not considered for a second. "Request any revealed documents." Not done. "Ask what steps the reporter has taken to resolve or correct the issue." Nothing in the report. There are officers on the department that could have been approached. There's a chain of command for a reason. "Determine who, what, where, when, and how." Only who and what was consistently addressed in the report. Investigators should also be fully informed about company policies, procedures, and company history. Investigators must know the management controls and strategies employed by the relevant business unit. In this case, Fire Rescue Department. If the goal was truly to appear fair or impartial, why wasn't an investigator with some sort of public safety background selected for the job? Basically, the town's attorney hired another lawyer to create an obviously biased document, which was in turn used as cause for termination. "Independence means that everyone gets a fair chance and that all investigation subjects are each investigated in the same manner, with the same professional impartial objective treatment." The investigator's report does not include a single question that was asked to anyone interviewed. No questions. Let's see. The essence of professionalism is that the investigators conduct the investigation with, conduct the, sorry. The essence of professionalism is that the investigators conduct the investigation with integrity, fairness, and diligence. How the investigation is conducted reflects professionalism. There is no... Never mind. I already did that one. All right. Had enough fun with that. Let's look at the fire department bylaws for a second. "The officers of the department shall be..." Uh, this is in Article Five, Officers, Coordinators, and Secretary. "The officers of the department shall be: one chief, elected by membership and confirmed by appointment of the Board of Selectmen. Minimum qualifications: The chief and deputy chief shall have a minimum of firefighter one or be an active member on any department since 1991, and, and a minimum of ten years in fire and/or rescue service, at least five years of which must be with the NFRD." So, when, uh, chief was on leave and Curry was bypassed, you broke this bylaw right here. You put somebody in who wasn't a member of the department for five years, wasn't even a firefighter. Here we go. These were overlooked as well. "The executive board shall consist of the department chief and deputy chief. This board shall consist of three members. In the event that one of those members is disqualified for any reason from serving on leave, the most senior member of the department shall be designated to serve as the third member of the executive board." Article Six, election of chief and secretary. "The chief and secretary shall be elected by popular vote of the members at the January regular monthly meeting each year by written ballot for one term." Nominee? That's boring. All right. "In the absence of the chief, refer to the command structure." Appendix A. Couldn't be more straightforward. Command structure, appendix A. Chief? Deputy chief? Doesn't say building inspector. Article Eight, duties of the deputy chief. "The deputy chief shall take orders from the chief and assist the chief with duties assigned in Article Seven of these bylaws. In the absence of the chief, the deputy chief assumes the duties of the chief in accordance with these bylaws and within NH RSA 154. Deputy chief shall be responsible for roster duties." No idea what you guys are doing. Article Nine, duties of the captains and lieutenants. Blah, 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 just basically pointing out there is an actual chain of command which was broken. "All officers shall report to the chief and initiate action for any misconduct negligence." Okay. That's a good one. Article Fifteen, reprimands, suspension, impeachment, and appeals. "Personal complaints among members should be directed to the executive board, who should seek to moderate differences. If resolution is not possible, any member can submit a written grievance or complaint for misconduct, negligence, or lack of professionalism. Such complaints shall come before the executive board. Upon receipt of the written complaint, the executive board shall notify in writing the person against whom the grievance or complaint is made. The person against whom the charge is made may submit a written defense. Didn't do any of that. This defense shall be submitted within seven days of notification of this complaint. The executive board will schedule a meeting within fifteen days of receiving the complaint. All papers should be received by the executive board one week before the meeting between the executive board and the person against whom the complaint is made. The person who is filing the complaint must be present at the meeting within fifteen days of the meeting. A written resolution must be filled. After three substantiated complaints against the person, they are subject to suspension. There may be immediate suspension for thirty days without appeal for any member asked to leave a scene for cause and refusing to do so expeditiously. This overrides all other sections of this article. The authority to ask a member to leave rests with ICS Command and the chief and officers.
Mr. Viltchuk, your time has expired.
I'll be back in two weeks.
Thank you.
I knew someone that was on the three hundred committee. Not gonna get him to help again.
You too. Okay. Review action items for next meeting. Actually, general business. We don't have much under there.
I do have one thing that I forgot to mention.
Okay.
Fawn did some research as we're going through the hazard mitigation plan update. We're talking about emergency situations and preparing for. One of the things that came up is we have diesel storage at the Smoke Street pit, but we don't have gasoline as an option. And if we are ever in a situation where there's no power to Lyers or we're blocked access to an outlying town for the police cruisers to be able to get gasoline or any vehicle that uses gas for that matter, we're stuck in a situation. So, she's done some preliminary research and I'm sorry, I don't have it with me. It's actually sitting on my desk. I can go grab it. But she's reached out to our fuel provider and got a quote to install a five hundred gallon cube, very similar to the diesel cube that's already in place over there. It's about, I think it's just shy of nine thousand dollars. It's about eighty-eight hundred dollars. And if you'd like, I can bring forward the rest of the information because I failed to tonight.
Are we leasing or renting the tank? Do we own the tank?
No, we would own the tank.
We own the tank.
We would own the tank. And it would also result in we would get the fuel in bulk from the provider. We'd be saving about forty to fifty cents per gallon on the gasoline.
And that's something we're not getting right now? We don't get reimbursed for that? Like we go to Lyers to...
Yeah. They're using the WEX card, which gives them a discount.
Okay.
But it would be even significant. It'd be more of a savings than that. So, I would like to bring it back up next week as we're talking about the budget review because then we can see where we're at on specific funds and maybe even use it as a project to consider under the ARP of funds that remain.
How's the board feel about that?
Say we table it to our...
Get the full... Yeah, that ties in with what we have for infrastructure over there, like what the cube is and if it requires a power supply.
I can forward out the information for you to review for next week.
So, as everybody knows, a growing trend now is to have everything above ground and not underground.
And we don't have to worry about removing it and getting the DES approval. The headache that we ended up with at the Highway Garage.
Alright, so we'll bring that up at the next meeting?
Thank you.
When we do at the next meeting, when we do the budget, you know, to know what we have in every fund to spend because every time seems like we're talking, there's something else for us to buy. So, it'd be good to know where we can prioritize what we can spend and what we can't spend for what's left in each budget line item for departments or where we can get the money from.
Any further comment on that? No other general business? Now, review action items for next meeting. This.
The gas tank option. The budget review.
Playground.
Playground structure. Oil tank. Conference room. Rec department.
Full agenda.
We also have the water test results from Frank Gonzalez. He's tentatively scheduled for the seventeenth and Kevin Bassett regarding Laborry Drive.
Alright.
Is that all?
We need more?
We need to go back to the warrant item for the dogs, whether we're doing that or not. That needs to be done today.
Yep, thank you.
I just pulled up the RSA. Where'd it go? Maybe he's authorized. List of listed dogs.
Four sixty-six thirteen.
Yep.
So, it is by statute. The twenty-five dollars.
All the fees are in here and four fifty for this, seven fifty for this, and then...
Whoever is the owner or keeper of a dog and who fails to license or renew the dog license pursuant to four sixty-six colon one shall forfeit twenty-five dollars to the town or city clerk of the municipality in which the dog is kept. If the forfeiture is not made to the town or city clerk within fifteen days of the notice of forfeiture, the case may be disposed of in a district court as a violation with a fine not to exceed fifty dollars, notwithstanding the provisions of RSA six fifty-one colon two. And then it goes on.
What is the provision against us if we... I don't even know what that is in here. Like if we just have to... The towns not in compliance. I would assume it's more than twenty-five dollars.
This is state law. So, at this point, I guess our hands are tied as far as...
Because basically, if you don't pay your twenty-five dollars and then your seven dollar fee or acknowledge that your dog has passed away, this may be the reason why and it's still on the list, you know, you'll be subject to being addressed by the court for fifty dollars. Seems so ridiculous, but...
Yeah.
Well, I paid mine, so...
You are no longer on the list.
I'm no longer on the list.
You just saved twenty-five dollars.
I think you're off it twice. It's per, it's not, it's per animal too. So, I believe there are a few people that are multiple pets that are on here.
But I guess some of that's old too, so we don't know if that's been updated, but... So, we're not gonna make, when we set out these letters, you know, if the dog's dead, we're not, there's nothing we can do. So, no win.
And she had already taken people that had moved out of town on this?
I think Kelly noted two additional ones today that she was aware of. I don't think they've been crossed off that list, but it will only apply to those that are still here.
Somebody's gonna make the motion.
How do we want the motion to state per RSA? Make a motion per, present to RSA four six six dot fourteen for warrants proceeding for issuance of civil, excuse me, tortures for each unlicensed dog in this warrant. Do I have to read the whole thing or is that close enough?
Close enough.
So, Nottingham, if you haven't registered your dog, get to it because you're getting a letter saying that you owe us twenty-five dollars and seven dollars some fee. Or contact the town clerk to make sure that if your dog has passed away, that she has acknowledged that the dog has passed away. I don't think she needs anything in writing to say it's passed away. Your word is good enough to say the dog has passed away.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by John Moran, seconded by Steve Welch. Roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Mesherl.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlet. Okay. Any other town business?
What's the name?
No. Alright, I will now open this up to public comment. We'll limit to three minutes.
Three minutes.
Yep. Reminding folks, as you come up to the table, you please state a full name and your address, please.
My name is Brent Tweed, twenty-three Fort Hill Road. I'll try to do a condensed version because I got more than three minutes. I'm a current member of the Nottingham Fire Rescue Department. I've been a member for about three years. Investigator, investigation report does not reflect what I observed in those three years of working with the Viltchucks. What I observed was a well-organized, well-run fire department. Equipment was maintained very good. Procedures and protocols followed. Both Viltchucks operated in exceptionally professional manner. There are descriptions in the report of Viltchucks acting unprofessionally rudely and with foul language in front of patients. I witnessed no such thing and in fact, it's my opinion that both would have given very stern warnings and or disciplinary action to any individual in the department who behaved in such an unprofessional manner. I've never heard either use any language that could be deemed racially or ethnically discriminatory, homophobic, or transphobic. Take serious issue with the quality and accuracy of the investigation report. When I observed, the chief always took the safety and maintenance of equipment and vehicles very seriously. Whenever an issue arose, he immediately took action to have equipment fixed. The investigator has findings that the chief has knowledge of potentially unsafe brakes, yet the investigator never consulted an expert outside the department to validate this claim, as with many of the claims. Additionally, she doesn't appear to have looked into whether proper procedure notifications were made by those claiming an issue with the brakes. Was the chief notified this was a safety issue? Was the issue documented in deficiency report? Was the chief and the Rockingham County Sheriff Dispatch notified prior to taking the vehicle out of service as required by some unknown department member? Investigator puts no focus on determining whether this was an actual safety issue that was mishandled by the chief. Instead, she seems to focus on perception. She states this is corroborated by four witnesses, but she makes no distinction between whether the witness observed that maintenance was required on the brakes or whether they corroborated that there was an issue with the equipment being operated in unsafe condition. Quite a big difference. Brakes needing maintenance is not an uncommon issue to have. Like much of the report, the investigator fails to do any due diligence and determine if this was truly a safety issue or if it was just routine maintenance issue. Additionally, like much of the report, she groups much of the so-called corroboration, so it's unclear what exactly is being corroborated. According to the report, the chief stated the brake issue was identified and repaired upon discovery. The investigator report claims about a lack of up-to-date standard operating procedures and guidelines, but she made no attempt to review these or consult an expert to do so. The issue supports claims of lack of incident pre-planning and training. Yet she makes no attempt to validate these claims. Nothing like that. I saw plenty of standard operating procedures, so this is not accurate from what I understand. Any member officer was free to make proposed changes and submit those changes to the chief for approval. It's just changes. There's no evidence presented. It's just that any member officer did so. Investigator just falls back on the claim. The chief is not receptive to suggestions about updating and improving these procedures and guidelines without providing any evidence or examples. The investigator lists concerns about no schedule for routine maintenance on vehicles. And when provided testimony to the contrary, she makes no attempt to validate whether such a schedule in fact exists, which it did. She also lists concerns about snow chains on vehicles, not a very common practice in this area. Radios, air compressors, station furnaces. Investigator just appears to pile a list of gripes without actually determining whether or not these were just routine maintenance issues and whether or not these issues were handled properly, which I bet they were. Investigator does not address this in her report. She makes no finding as to whether or not these issues were properly handled by the department management. Her only finding in regard to these issues are that the issues raised are valid and raise questions about the adequacy of communication. The fact that she lists these issues in her report without properly investigating them creates the appearance that there are numerous maintenance and equipment issues, but in fact, she makes no specific finding regarding the adequacy of maintenance and equipment in that section of the report. There's sections of the report about canceling mutual aid. Investigator made no attempt to consult an outside expert and her findings amount to the incident was most concerning. And several individuals expressed the view about the chief's dislike of receiving mutual aid. These findings are not helpful at all and clearly show the investigator had no business performing this investigation without the aid and expert in emergency services. Investigator attempts to paint the picture that the chief was averse to receiving mutual aid. In my experiences with the chief, I've seen nothing but the most professional command and control during emergency services incidents. In fact, in regard to mutual aid, he specifically told me to call for mutual aid early and to fail conservatively by requesting potentially more help than is necessary when on your way to the scene of an incident. Then, once you're on scene, you can make an evaluation for what help is necessary and call off any help that was called that was determined not to be needed. So, there's examples in here about mishandling mutual aid. Let's see.
Your time's expired, Mr. ...
Time is expired. Alright, well, I guess maybe I'll be back in two weeks too because I read about, I didn't even read the conclusion, so... But I think you get the idea.
Thank you, Mr. Tweed.
Chris Albert, thirty-sixth Stage Road. Gonna change it up a little bit. I spoke, I think, with Ellen about two weeks ago on Berry Road. The forty-eight inch culvert is still clogged by beavers. It's gonna overtake the road someday if we get more rain. Again, it does flood my fields farther upstream, so I need that to get that addressed. We don't have a road agent at the time, so I'm putting the Board of Selectmen on notice that that needs to get corrected. Again, it's the old telephone pole. We need to get that washed out and fixed. I didn't hear anything as far as the transfer station about the can crushing. I know it's a couple of months ago that we approved the new can crusher be installed. I was up last week. I haven't been there this weekend, but that still hasn't been installed yet. So, I'm just questioning the status on the can crusher. We talked about the oil tank out back here. I was trying to check my maps. This is the North River. This is the shoreline protection. We're designated a river. That's a quarter mile radius, two hundred foot radius. You're pretty close to the two foot, two hundred fifty foot radius to the oil storage. I think that's a pertinent health, safety that needs to be addressed. You're also talking about maybe some kind of fuel storage at what the...
Home Street.
On Smoke Street?
Yep.
Okay, not over here?
Correct.
Alright, because again, that was a big controversy when you guys relocated. You know, the BOS relocated or kept the Highway Garage over there with the salt shed and fuel storage, which is illegal when we did that about ten, fifteen years ago. I just wanted to put, point that out. Yeah, that's actually, actually, that's the Little River. It's actually outside. There is no shoreline protection and it's outside that zone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bob DeRozia, seventy-five, Stage Road. Just like to make a comment about the fuel storage that you're planning for the Smoke Street pit. You want to put a gasoline storage tank down there? Why would we want to do that?
That was proposed.
Proposed. Why would we want to do that if the vehicles are purchasing fuel at Lyers or Irving's? They all have generators to run during bad weather.
Well, as the town administrator had mentioned earlier, in the event, should they not have power, we would have a source of fuel as backup. Mind you, we'd also be saving upwards of forty-one cents a gallon, which is pretty significant considering the price of gas these days.
Are you gonna continuously use that fuel or are you just gonna store it?
We, no. As my understanding, we will continuously use it, meaning throughout the time now. Because why would we want to go to another gas station, pay an extra forty-one cents a gallon when we can have our own? So, it's not gonna get stale or anything like that, okay?
Alright, so the other thing is getting back to the fire department. Can the town get a refund from Ms. Stevens? I mean, you guys are all smart. You read this report. You must see all kinds of holes in it. I mean, I look at it and I see things that should have been done differently. Like Mr. Bates has pointed out, why didn't Mr. Sterndale, Mr. Scruton, why weren't they interviewed? They made comments about a captain from, a chief from Durham being upset about being canceled. Did anybody go and speak to him about the incident? As I've been told by a reliable source that the Epping Fire Department was on that call for the well rescue. Why weren't they interviewed? The problems with the brakes and the truck. Did anybody get the maintenance records from Foss Motors? How many times has that truck been down there for repairs? Tempsus? That's a critical document, okay? That report has to cover the ambulance when it goes on medical call from start to finish. And it has to be accurate. Sometimes it's referred to in lawsuits. So, those things have to be accurate. And thank God, you have some people that review them because there's some people down there that probably can't put two sentences together to make sense. So, they review these reports and yes, they have to make corrections. There's nothing wrong with that. It's done all the time. So, and the other thing I wanted to say is Jay and Sandy were the big disciplinary people down there. They're the ones that kept the place going. They kept everybody straight. They maintained the standards. You've removed them now. Who's gonna maintain the discipline down there? You've got two guys down there that have been fired from previous jobs. You think they're just gonna sit back and relax now? That's not gonna happen. There's gonna be more problems down there. You've gotta divide down there. The people that supported the chief and these new hires that apparently are against them. So, I hope somebody down there has got the balls to stand up to these full timers and instill the discipline that's required down there.
Martin Campiola, Garia Drive. I only want to address the issue that's raised around John Scruton and the prior town administrator. One of the, my strong feeling when I read that report is that I think the Board of Selectmen in Nottingham have relied too heavily on town administrators not really doing their job. And I say that because as a person who was an executive manager for ten years and supervised countless people, when he received a copy of those written warnings against that one particular firefighter, a red flag should have gone up immediately. He should have, first of all, eight in a row because of whatever reason. Some of those were petty reasons. And to me, it was an indicator that maybe the chief was struggling with how to handle this one particular employee. I don't know. I'm not making, I'm not making any claim against what the chief was doing or not doing, but it would have raised a red flag in my mind. And I think that the past town administrators, and this doesn't include you, Ellen, in this at all, took a very hands-off approach, which leaves the Board of Selectmen in a very vulnerable position because you can only rely on what these people are telling you because, correct me if I'm wrong, you were responsible for managing the heads of these departments, which means you should be meeting with the staff on a regular basis at a minimum of monthly, okay? And if you're not doing that, you should be doing that. And I hope to God you are doing that because that's the only way the Board of Selectmen can get the proper information about what is happening in these departments. And without that, you're really at a loss. And so, I think that no matter what happens, if you don't have a system in place, you need to get a system in place to make sure that your town administrator, whether it's Ellen, who I hope is great and stays here a long time, or it's somebody else that you hire, gives you guys the kind of information that you need so that you know what's going on, so that town administrators can help these heads of these departments who are struggling with possibly bad employees or difficult employees or whatever the case may be. Let's face it, most of the people that are in some of these positions probably have never had formal training on how to be a manager. And maybe that's necessary too and something to look at down the road. So, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Doug Cummings, three forty-eight, Stage Road. Mine's gonna be real quick. I want to give you an opportunity. I'd love to hear you respond to all of this. What is your response?
Will you hear, sir?
You can have my time.
Thank you. As I mentioned in my opening statement, we are not gonna discuss personnel issues.
What, what do you hide? It's not personnel, they're not! What, what are you hiding? It's over.
They're fired.
There's something, there's something that you tell...
Still personnel. We're not, we're not gonna discuss personnel issues, I'm sorry. Any other, anybody else would like to come up and chat?
Is there anything you're hiding?
It's the protocol when you have a problem. Does anybody really know?
It's like you don't care about the citizens.
It's not, that's not it, sir.
You can tell me what is it, strike me out.
I've already made the statement, okay? So we're not gonna discuss personnel issues, no, that isn't it at all, go ahead, ma'am.
Well, my name's Cindy Bloom, I'm from Seven Dwight Road, and while I wasn't gonna make this comment, I think you can discuss management issues as you go forward, and maybe that should be on the agenda next time, is how you're going to avoid being in this situation ever again, because it's not a good situation for anybody involved. And the other thing that I wasn't gonna say, but you were talking about collecting fees for licensing of dogs, and I used to work credit and collections and make phone calls to people, I'd be glad to do that on a volunteer basis, if you have a list of a bunch of people that you haven't had replies from, and it would be free, it doesn't cost you the postage, and it might cut down your list significantly, so...
That would be something I can propose to the town clerk.
Okay. And what I'm really here to talk about is I noticed on the website that you're changing, um, how fees are collected at the recycling center, and...
You did miss that, I think you came in a little bit late, we are going to...
Continue with cash.
Continue with cash, and we're going to evaluate, because we might even have to have a web, uh, excuse me, internet booster up there, so, I saw you come in a little bit late for the meeting, so we did discuss...
And we were gonna continue with what?
We are gonna continue with cash.
Yep.
The card machine was gonna be up there, I don't remember everything we said at the beginning.
It's already in place.
Yep.
There were some questions about the Wi-Fi connectivity, we might have to put a booster up there, just, I believe there was two transactions, I'm not sure, I haven't seen the receipts for this past weekend, uh, but there were at least two transactions that took place after we installed it over that weekend, so it is working, it's, we're just not sure how well.
Okay, and I guess my concern is that the fact that you would even consider not allowing cash there, I used to work at the recycling center, it's a very efficient method, it doesn't, um, one of your things said that this is going to make town services more efficient, it's not, not for the people who work up there, um... There's...
We're gonna correct that posting, Cindy.
Okay.
So there's going to be no change, the only thing that is now in place is we now accept credit cards, there is a two-point-nine-nine percent processing fee attached, but that's up for discussion as well.
And on the debit cards, there's no fee, correct?
Um, I'm not sure, I think it's regardless, I think it's just...
You need to check that, because I believe both Visa and MasterCard prohibit that, and the way the notice was written, that was on there, and so I'll just give you these for, for record, and, yeah, but the management issues, I think, could be addressed, Ben.
No.
And I think it's worth doing it, even if it's not today, at some point, because what a crazy mess, and I think this almost got you into a similar mess, so, with the cash, so...
Thank you for your time.
You are welcome.
Bonnie Patton, eighteen Raymond Road, in light of this situation and the way things have been handled, has anybody given any consideration or thought to possibly hiring a part-time HR personnel, so that the department heads or the employees have a neutral area they can go and speak to somebody, before things are blown out of proportion on Facebook or town gossip? That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Mr. Barlet, the lady was gone, would I be able to have additional time, just to finish up my statement? I don't have, it's my app like that.
I'll, I'll give you another three minutes.
So again, Brent Tweed, twenty-three Fort Hill Road, I'll just pick up where I left off. Uh, so one incident which mutual aid was called off was for a female pandered fallen tree, report states mutual aid was requested because more hands were needed to carry out, carry out of the woods. According to the report, the chief called off the mutual aid request for more help to execute the patient, once he determined the department itself could handle the matter without the additional mutual aid. Again, the investigator failed to properly investigate this incident by consulting with an expert, though consulting, consulting an expert, the investigator is in no position to make any determination as to whether or not the chief's decision to call off mutual aid was proper. Uh, it was also reported that the chief improperly called off mutual aid on an incident that involved an individual trapped in a well, it stated the chief called off a specialty rescue team when he was not on scene. From my experience working with the chief, he would not have called off mutual aid for a specialty rescue team until he had made a proper determination that they were no longer required. It would take a quite, quite a stretch of imagination for, for me to believe otherwise. Again, the investigator failed to properly investigate this incident, failed to consult an expert, it should be noted, the investigator listed no findings in regard to this issue. Another example given to the chief's problematic command and controls in regards to a wild animal fire at Pawtucket State Park, this was a several-day event, and I spent at least one day helping to fight this fire. I witnessed no command and control issues while I was fighting this fire. The specific issue in regard to the incident concerns the chief having personnel wait at the station, and that this was inappropriate, as it may have delayed response and caused more property damage. This is yet another example of investigator failing to conduct a proper investigation. It is common with incidents of this nature to have personnel staged at the station or other locations until more information about an incident is known. Because the park is so big, there are, and there are multiple entrances, it may actually cause a delay in response if personnel respond to the wrong location or entrance. It can take upwards of forty-five minutes to get from one point in the park to another. If the personnel had responded to the park and gone to an incorrect location, this could in fact have delayed response to the fire. Again, it would be necessary for the investigator, investigator consult with an expert in order to make any determinations in regard to this incident, and again, in her findings section, she lists no findings for this incident. Uh, most of the rest of the report had the same issues I've just discussed. Investigator sums up a bunch of complaints, and fails to adequately list the rebuttal of the Viltchucks, and investigator fails to consult an expert in emergency services. In the findings section, she often makes no finding in regard to some of the serious claims, neglecting to conduct a thorough investigation. She combines the investigation of the chief and lieutenant, in my opinion, to create the appearance of a more convincing case than if she had just wrote a separate report for each person. Often, she combines a number of complaints together, and then is able to state the issue has been corroborated by more people. In one example, she lists two people as corroborating an incident because they heard the chief call off mutual aid over the radio. In another section, she combines the complaints about criticism of other employees and inappropriate communications, so that no determination could be made about corroboration of some of the more serious accusations. She fails to adequately deal with credibility of any of the witnesses, especially regarding some of the more serious accusations, even though the report makes clear that there are credibility issues in regards to the behavior and insubordination of some individuals. The report lists several examples of insubordination, and the testimony of one officer stated some individuals were troublemakers, and refused to complete simple tasks such as cleaning and laundry. An officer also testified that individuals made racially insensitive remarks. The chief testifies that one individual falsified a medical report. She fails to determine what actions were taken to document and relay concerns up the chain of command, and if this wasn't done, why wasn't it done? She continually falls back on the chief wasn't receptive, without providing any evidence or examples. I always found the chief to be receptive, I could walk into his office anytime and talk to him, which I did on a number of occasions. Never once did I feel uncomfortable speaking with the chief, or bringing up any issues or problems, and the chief was always professional and treated me with the utmost respect. Additionally, the investigator often fails to obtain documentary evidence or follow-up by interviewing additional witnesses that could, could have corroborated the complaints.
Mr. Tweed, your time's up.
Uh, I got one more paragraph, thirty seconds. Okay, thirty, yeah, just one last paragraph. When I read the investigation report, it almost seems I must be reading a report about another department, because it's not an accurate description of the department I have been volunteering at for the past three years. The report conclusion states Nottingham Fire Rescue Department is currently in a state of dysfunction with extremely low morale. Now that the investigation is over, and the chief and lieutenant Viltchuck have been terminated, I would have to agree with that conclusion. Thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Please, thanks. I would just like to say, if, if, uh, you guys haven't had a chance, or anyone in the audience, or anyone at home, anyone from Nottingham, should take a look at, um, the, Doug Bates and his blog, analysis of the investigator's report, and analysis of the fire department fiasco. This town is lucky to have journalists like this amongst you, and that's it. Thank you. We, uh, if there's no other discussion, we are ready to move into non-public.
Which one are we using? A and B? Make a motion to move into non-public for RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, two, A and B.
Okay, you have a motion made by Matt Sherlin, seconded by Steve Welch, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, Matt Sherlin.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Ben Barlet. Thank you, Nottingham, good night.